Go ahead and get started then. We'll start off with the invocation of Commissioner Patton. If you do that, please, we'll do a pledge first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious Father in heaven, we approach our throne this evening in a humble manner. After your blessings upon us, we enter into this meeting. Please bless us with wisdom and patience to discuss and to plan activities for this city that it may go forward and grow. And we pray, Father, you will bless our city and bless our nation in this time of unrest and illness. We ask you, Father, to heal our nation, make things well. For be with us, Father, bless us where we can and forgive us when we fail you. In Christ's name, amen.
Welcome everybody out tonight. We're going to get started. First item is the bills.
We have to pay all bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, sitting by the aisle.
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes.
You have to approve the minutes.
Yeah, so actually I did. I jumped over there.
I was getting ready to say I approve the minutes.
We're going to approve the minutes from the last meeting. I don't think we asked a special meeting. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, sitting by the aisle. Post same. And the motion passes.
We did have a special call meeting to make sure it says all minutes.
All minutes.
Regular and special.
Okay, next item is under new business, the comprehensive plan update and resolution. I know you all have been aware, we've been working on this for, it seems like, forever. COVID hit us and kind of backed things up a little bit, but they did get everything finalized. The planning and zoning has approved everything. And I think you all, did they get copies?
Yeah.
Of course, everybody gets what I thought.
It's the resolution.
That's the resolution. Did you get a copy of the?
Oh, yes, that's, yeah.
It's been some time back, but, no, the plan itself.
Oh, oh.
I think it's been a while. I think Hartford approved it. Did they approve it at their last meeting? So it's our, we've got to approve it and it's got to go to the fiscal court for final approval for it to go into place.
We have to make the motion that we approve the comprehensive plan update resolution.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, sitting by the aisle. Post same. Motion passes. Next item is a contract with the ticket agency for amplified or ticket sales. This is something since, because of the volume of money that could be coming through it, attorney felt we needed to do it through the city as well as through tourism. I think I talked to all of you about it a little bit with the company we're looking at and kind of excited about what they have to offer as far as their ability to help a lot on the paperwork with the lease anyway with the funds coming through. So we need approval of that, please.
What was the name of the company that you were getting?
ETICS.
ETICS?
Make a motion that we approve the contract for the ticket agency ETICS.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Those in favor, sitting by the aisle. Post same. Motion passes. Next item is police statistics.
Thank you, Mr. Mike.
You look at those, all our numbers for 2020 are going to be down. A lot of the rest is down because the sad may seem, it got worse. And not blaming the jail or anybody like that, what we understand, but it got to where they were very picky on what they took. The thing is, that's where, if you look, even our accidents, they're down, and that's due to a lot of people staying home.
And I will say this, Mike, that's something, from what I've talked to, a lot of other cities are seeing the same thing, the jails, they're just, they're not able to take.
Right. And actually, jail over here is closed right now.
Yeah.
So we either have to take them, if we arrest them, we have to take them to Grater County, Nudelnburg County, Davis County. So I tell my guys, if you can sign them, the court will sign them. If you actually wouldn't have to arrest them, arrest them and we'll deal with it. But if you look at them, just turn, for a page here, about cases, again, they was down. We had 82 cases in 2020. If you look, seven of them were closed, there's five still open. Some of those that's open are like identity theft, it's a big majority of them that's open. Of course, those cases, you hardly ever find those. Before people come in, they have their identity stolen, social security, whatever. And we enter them and we hardly ever, you hardly ever saw one of those, other from British states and things like that. And then it just breaks down, we work cases, number of cases there. On that page, it are total number of accidents for 2020, 164. And we always run between 205 and 215 every year, just like clockwork. So this year it was 164, only 13 of them had injuries. And we're proud to say that we didn't have any fatalities, but that's a good thing.
Yes.
You look at the bottom of that page there and it shows that, like Park Lot was 67, they're always the highest on our list. 62, 231, there's 60. City Street, 13. From Walmart to McDonald's, we're an accident-prone area that we kind of break it down. There was six there and there was six on WK Parkway. So if you look over to the far right, you'll see kind of what number of wrecks that officers were. And if you look at that, you know, the daycare department, majority of the wrecks, just called it, that much more traction. Next page, so the, okay, it's got the accident-prone areas, there was six. And majority of our 1046 was between Walmart and Oplight and McDonald's. That's where, you know, we had three. And we had three, 1045.
Mike, there was one Friday night and it wasn't, I don't think it was between Walmart and McDonald's, but it was just past McDonald's and the bridge.
Yeah.
Would that be considered ours, Hartford, or is it?
It was ours.
Well, I know the Beaver Dam Fire Department was going out there. I've met them.
They grew up on the bridge, didn't they?
Yeah, they started there at McDonald's and the rest of them.
It ended up on the other side, okay.
It's ours, it's ours, it's ours in there, that's kind of why we do that. Our total number of calls, of course, they were down, but not, you know, not down a lot for 2019. They were down 600, but there's still 4300 in one call that we entered in some case or in fact. The DUIs are red, if you look on the left, it's 2020, on the right it says 2020, but that's just a little type on, that's my mistake, we're not perjury, well, no.
So the right is 2019?
Yeah, on the right it should be 2019. It says 2020. But you can see the DUIs, alcohol, drugs, in public and complicated, is included in over 25. But as it's always been, alcohol and drugs, you can kind of split them and there usually be, not much, you know, not very much, it'd be half would be alcohol, half would be drugs related. That's from people, maybe even, sometimes they're unaware that, that even though they got a prescription, a war tab or a purpose set, and they say, well, we got a prescription for them, well, they need to read a little stuff and understand that it's compared to the rest. So before that, if you look on that last page, from the last page there, it talks about our certification against, they're down also. Our seat belt, they were down, speeding was down, speeding had 65, seat belts had 34. So everything was just down from last year, not meaning that the guys didn't do their job, just meaning that they're not as much traction now. If you look there, we served 101 warrants in 2020, down from, it's probably, they're probably down about 100 from the year before last. Drug-related charges, they run pretty much what they did last year, possession of methamphetamine, 19, marijuana, 15, traffic getting banned, marijuana, four. Drug protection day, of course, that's 23, that could be, of course, from needles to reach to marijuana, five, to parole payment with marijuana. So there's a lot of different things filed under the drug protection day. But you've got to have, you can't have parole papers in charge of the drug protection day if they don't have something to do with, so you want to say.
Yeah.
If you've got a, if somebody's got a, let's say a bomb, if there's no smoking it and there's nothing in it, just a bomb, or they got a new pipe, you can't charge it. But in the last page, we're just some odd things that we threw in there. But all those stats are down for last year, and I think that they're that way about every word that you can look around, I think. Each probably going to say it's down too. But that's just a little overlay, a little idea of what's going on in 2020. If you have any questions, just ask them about them, I'll let you know.
Any questions for Mike? Thank you. These are always kind of neat to see and compare to the year before. Police surplus, we'll just let you keep on going.
I wanted to ask, but y'all know who has Officer Smith went to McLean County. And when we wear our vests, they get fitted to us and they, they probably got one fitted in there. McLean County Sheriff was called and asked if he could buy a Cody to wear. And it's half one F, they're about five years is what it's supposed to be, and we had about two and a half. And he said if he could get it to clear service for us, that he would give us $400 for half, you know, more than half of what the vest probably worth. But Cody didn't have one and he didn't have one for him. And I know it's not our place to supply any vests, but still, there's not really going to be much we can do with it.
Not doing that's any good.
Yeah. Because whoever we hire, parole fit. So if we can get it, then they have, we talked with sheriff, he can raise the case for $400 for the vest.
We do need that.
We do that then.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, sitting by the aisle. Post same. David, do you have anything for?
Kind of like Mike, the other numbers are down as well. Kind of a plus on for us is both the fire numbers are down, people not getting hurt or leaving things, so that's always a good thing. I'll kind of go over it real quick. On the first page, just kind of letter from me, and then the second page is just a brief overlay of our members, their certifications and their time that they had invested in fire service. The neat thing on that, if you look at it, there's over 360 combined use and over 30,000 hours of training throughout that department. If you look at the third page, it's first graph, it's kind of comparison year to year. 2019, we had 419, 2020, we had 310 runs. Across the board, everything, like I said, it's pretty low. It breaks it down, percentage of our runs, 41% of our total runs were medicals. The next highest was fires, and those can be anything from a firearm to brush fire, vehicle fire, structure fire, them kind of sorts. You flip over on the next one, it kind of breaks the fires down as far as kind of what they were. The 26 structures, like I said, some of those are going to be firearms, we have it in different places. Slot businesses and stuff, every once in a while we get firearms on them. The vehicle accidents, last year, we were 62% were accidents with injuries. This year, it's kind of flipped. We were seeing more accidents with no injuries or very minor injuries. We credit that a lot to, we're doing a whole lot less vehicles on roadway, so majority of runs are slant offs, is what we're running to, people running in ditches, stuff like that. Unfortunately, we have had three fatalities this year in car wrecks in our area where we work.
Those been on the parkway?
We've had one on the parkway, one on Prentice Road, and another on 65. We've had three fatalities this year, or last year. The next one kind of breaks down some of what the other responsible orders, some of those like hazmat, rest leaves, water rescues, missing persons, things of that nature. And then the last one kind of breaks down what's inside the city limits and what's outside the city limits, but still in our first hour area. You can see there are medicals within our city limits, probably our highest, highest cause.
I wonder why that's, why is that flipped from any of the others?
A lot of it, for the longest time, we wasn't really responding to any medicals because of COVID. There's a big percentage of the medical runs inside the city limits that we wasn't getting paid on, but we responded to because they were within the city. So the numbers are higher there because we're responding to.
So you went to less out of the city just because of that?
Our numbers are, this year already are starting to skyrocket. Like I said, we had 310 runs total in 2020. We, the two day, is 158, I think so far, or just in the month of February.
Most of those medical?
Majority of them are medical. When the COVID was starting to kind of wind down, we're trying to get a better hold on new path, COVID precautions, things are in place, medicals seem to be going back up. Where there's more people being out, more people interacting, doing things, we're seeing a lot more stability. That's kind of just a brief overlay of it.
Any questions? Thank you. James, you have anything?
No, I can't think of anything right off the bat. Are we going to be going in about the topic you discussed or didn't discuss but brought my attention today?
And we can't, we're dead to do that here. We can't do that in closed session.
Okay.
Okay. Larry, I know he was checking on a light out on my lens. Larry, I need you here tonight.
The Greenacre.
Thank you, out in Green Acres. Do you know if he ever found out anything?
I thought he found out that they couldn't put it where they wanted it and where they were trying to get one, the K or whoever, Green River is running electricity out there, so that they could put one on their house, but they'd have to buy it.
Yeah, I knew he said that.
But that's the last I've heard about.
But I was thinking he was going to check what the cost would be.
He did, well.
But you might not know.
I know, he was going to, he looked at moving it up to the intersection, what he talked about, and they declined, decided then they didn't want the light, so. That was the last I've heard.
That answers that question. That's it.
I'm going to go shake. I'm good, too.
Okay. I've just got one thing. We've got a opening on the Tourism Commission, and of course, it's limited because we have to have someone from the city of Beaver Dam, but I've had somebody that has shown an interest and some of them I've talked to, and I'd like to put her up for consideration tonight. That's Jill Lynn. They live out Green Meadows or Route B. Is that the right one? I get them mixed up.
I said Green Acres, it is Green Meadows.
Green Meadows, yeah.
Maurice Jackson, Maurice and Terry Donovan.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
She's, her husband's name's Sean, he works for Bruco and military, ex-military.
I don't know her, but I mean, it's, I'm glad we've got somebody wanting to do it.
I just need approval.
I'll make the motion that we approve Ms. Jill Lynn.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, sitting by the aisle. Post same. Motion passes. Ian?
I'd just like to get these emailed to us, is that cool?
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Cindy?
I just wanted to keep some communication going, let's go out in the park and, not saying I'm trying to pressure or get things done, but just kind of come in here. Probably to talk something about like bringing a waiver in for the sports to make your lawyer or y'all's lawyer to look over the waiver. And I was wondering if you could kind of create one, or if your lawyer may, you know, be able to present one that would be.
Well, have you talked to Tim anymore?
I haven't.
I know, and I haven't either because I know he's been in Florida, but that, the one group.
You're supposed to get together to do a calendar.
That one group he was talking to, with them being a league like that, they would have all the paperwork, we probably would need to use theirs to go along with what their setup and what their legal is already approved.
Exactly. That's what he was saying. I think he's going to participate in the February 20th, the very first one, but it would be one that I'm actually putting on with an event, so I would need a waiver. I can come across, but I just thought maybe if we kind of communicated, work together, maybe we.
Yeah, we'll need something from each player to sign. I don't know, I wish Larry was here.
That's what I did last year, I had everybody sign.
We may have something from Little League, I don't know.
Well, I'm sure we've got something for Little League that they had to sign for a waiver, but.
But I don't know if they do that, or if the league does it, the league might, the league may cover it. That's.
That is true. Are y'all going, is the softball going to be affiliated with anybody?
This first one isn't.
No.
No.
So I don't want to be responsible when I'm.
They would definitely probably need to be, have a release form of some kind.
We'll have to have some kind of release form, they're not worth a whole lot, but it would have something to show we're doing a due diligence, but, see, we've been talking with them, they're looking with the organization out of Paducah.
Right, I knew that they were trying to get an organization.
A league this summer.
Exactly.
Yeah, I knew that was, then you talked about, I mean, we talked about that too, me and Paul talked about it.
The one that I come with, I can present it with Sandy or Kevin or one of you guys, and you can get your waiver book over.
Okay. Yeah, if you can get us something, and I'll talk, we can talk to AV too, he may, Kevin's who you need to go through, is the parks.
I'll get with AV and he'll, we'll go over and see if it needs to add or delete something, that's all we can really do on that.
And he may already have something too.
He might.
Right.
Canned of some kind.
And I know I got the handicap swing at one time and it was deemed unsafe, and as I got to looking at it, it was. And thankfully, the lady got it back, she got her money back.
That was weird too, because we talked about that, when we, we looked at that and I said, how could that be safe?
Exactly.
And Larry was the one that found it, I think, he's the one that saw it wasn't safe, I think it was.
Yeah, and I was supposed to hold up 220 pounds.
And there's no way, there was no way, I thought, how in the world?
To be honest with you. But if we could try to work, I was talking to Deanna too about some grants that may be able to come through, but like I said, I'm not pushing anything, I just wanted to kind of bring up a few things, and then resurfacing the basketball court and tennis court hopefully with upcoming pickleball, too.
Well, I know Larry here for that, and I've got, I just talked to Larry Friday about that, so. When they, when they start talking, I'll start talking on that, but, yeah, we do, I know there was a plan Larry had talked about, we were going to resurface the basketball courts too.
Well, now, when that came up, we told them our priorities, and we were going to set stuff.
Yeah.
As funding and as use came up.
Yeah.
But now that there's, I know that's still a priority, but, you know, we asked them, the two young men here at that time, what their number one priority was, and it was the basketball, and that's what we were going to work on. And now there, there was been some swing to doing softball, and getting the softball league started up, which is going to need scoreboards and concessions, upkeep, you know, we can't do it all.
Right, I know. Well, they're, they're wanting a pickleball court, which, which I understand, and I know that, that's why you got, that is why you guys are here, right?
Basically, we just kind of just basically where you're at, what you're doing.
Well, I got, finally got the guy to put, give me an estimate, to do the one in Owensboro, like, excuse me, to do the exact size and the exact framing of the one in Owensboro, it was going to cost us $24,000. Now, what they do is they come in, they resurface it, and then they basically put a layer, I don't know what they call it, but it's got a name.
Different type of.
And it's, it's kind of spongy, it feels, it's good for your legs, is what it's for. And, but it was going to cost, to do the one, but see, I wanted to do more than that. I talked to Larry Friday, he said there is no way we could do that right now, to do the, to do the bigger one for sure. He said it'd even be a stretch to do the $24,000, but he said, he said that would be more apt to be done than the other one, but, he's still checking on it, but he just, it just financially, if we're going to do all the other stuff, it's going to, like you said, it's prioritized, and we're trying to get one done and then move on to the next and move on to the next one.
We're fine with that because Jimmy and I have talked, Jimmy Harris is with me on this, we going to on river that, but, and we're perfectly happy doing that.
Well, we still going to, we still want to tape it off and line it out so y'all can play.
Well, this young man was twice, didn't he? I put, I bought the best crack seal you could find, put it in the cracks, got a put a knife and even pushed it down, and it rolled up, I pushed it again. It looked good for two or three months and went back this spring and it's just peeled up, it's rolled up. So you get somebody in there like, I had my best intentions.
Sure.
Spent a couple hundred dollars and.
Okay.
Didn't do much. So you get someone, a tennis coach told me this, and I didn't know what he was talking about, most of the pickleballs play by older people, and there's a couple of courts in order we don't play on because it's hard on our knees, and that just, nobody else does, so if you're not careful, you'll get something to get by on, but it's not going to.
Otherwise, go use because it's too hard.
That's the other, you know, so we're just, just wanted to know where you was at.
Yeah, we did, we did, we did do discussion, the guy came down and finally, and he measured, which took me forever to get him down here.
Yeah.
But he did come down, measured, he gave me a price, then he told me, it's, it is a lot cheaper to do two at once, which was, actually, it'd be four, it's two and then two, so it'd be four courts, but it was, just to do the one with just two was $24,000.
Just for two?
The two, the two, what, basically what they had in Owensboro.
So four courts? What did he say about two courts? Did he say anything about two courts?
No, that's what I'm saying, what is a one in Owensboro, is it four or two?
It's four, it actually, it's four.
It's four pickleball courts?
They make four courts out of it.
Okay, then it was to do, we have room, he could put two Owensbords in ours, is what he said. And that's what he was quoting me on, was two Owensboro, so that would be eight courts? I thought it was just two.
And that's, hey, love to have it, but I think it's empty. I mean, that's.
Okay, so for the one, like the one in Owensboro, he said $24,000. And, and that, that was what we, what I went to Larry and talked to him about on Friday, I called him up to talk to him, and we discussed it. He said that would be a stretch, and I'm honest. But you were talking about the ceiling and all that, there, there is a better way to do the crack ceiling than the, you were probably using the rubber stuff that goes down in.
Mark bets they had it in Menards, you had that where I was.
It's, that's not the best.
Probably the best you, probably the best.
Talking old asphalt guy.
Probably the best you can get on, you know, for an individual like that.
There's.
Yeah, he's Mark top guy, he knows this stuff.
Yeah, there's stuff you can use that's better, there's a place in Evansville called Cosmacote, and I know they've got a crack sealer that's, it's, it's an emulsified sand and asphalt mix, and when you pour it out, you can just see it, it folds down into the crack, and it'll just, it goes down as far as a crack goes. And if it goes down six inches, you'll pour it out and it'll just all disappear down in that crack. And then it hardens, but it's, it's flexible, so when you're blacktop, because blacktop is going to expand in like that, and they eat in the winter, it's going to do this, it, it's got a little give to it and it won't break, but it, there would have to be a fix that we'd have to look at, how much that's going to.
See, we've got a core group here planned, there's probably eight or nine of us that are playing, and we think we can get more, but the courts we got.
And you can.
Listen, they're doable, don't get me wrong, they're doable, we got to set up the cracks in them, and if it rains, it's slick as snow, because it's got the moss on it, we couldn't, you'd have to scrub it off. And we don't, you know, we'd love to have four, but it's, it's something that you need to grow on, Sammy's going to have.
So one tennis court will make two pickleball courts?
One tennis court, I think, will make four.
Yeah, we could make eight.
Actually, they need a little more room in Owensboro, they're pretty tight, but we play them every day, so it's nothing that, I mean, we're playing when it's 35 degrees sunshine, that's how stupid we are when we get addicted to it.
See, I thought the one he quoted me only had, he said it was like the one in Owensboro, and I, I thought I remembered the one in Owensboro only having two courts on it, but you said it has four.
Yeah, four.
So the other quote he gave me, which was, I think, 30, I want to say 38, nine or 39, eight. It was cheaper to do the two, the second was a lot cheaper, but that would be eight courts instead of four.
Yeah.
So that's kind of a lot.
Oh, that's, hey, see, our courts in Owensboro, four courts, they're full, both every day[1760.66] Oh, that's, hey, uh, see, our courts in Owensboro are four courts. They're full, both every day, but some courts, only two of them are played with three, so. With their city that size, to have four courts here would be great, but is it feasible? Maybe not. I don't know. I think a lot of people won't play. It's more geared for older people. Our younger people play it, but it's more geared for younger people. And also, they told us, the net system was two thousand dollars a piece, that's poles and nets, which I thought was outrageous. I found some cheaper poles, but the poles you looked at have the cranks on them.
Yeah.
And what they've got on it was all smooth, so that's, they done it for safety. So I mean, it's no added, you get what you pay for, so. But we're just curious to see what's going on and.
We have had discussions about it, but we're not to the point.
I was going to talk to you yet, but I got, I got to talk to every Brown if you don't like that lady.
Yes, I know how that is, and, and I do understand.
Jimmy's talked to some other people also.
Did the other people, did, did you get the same price? Do y'all know what they paid in Owensboro? What they paid for the courts?
Was it twenty-two or twenty-four?
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six, so we're about right, then. It's about the same price.
Yeah, it was, uh, yeah, I'm surprised twenty-four thousand was cheaper.
Well, to be honest with you, what I gathered, they're not doing that much right now. He's like, right now, this time of the year, they're kind of slow. And he said he would come down and start in two weeks.
Can they do it this time of year with the temperature?
He can, as long as the weather's above, I think he told me forty-five degrees. I think they could do it if it was forty-five degrees or warmer. You know, in February, March, we have some days that are forty-five, you know, where they could, but.
But it has to be for sustained period forty-five degrees or just warm.
I don't know. He didn't, I didn't really ask him that.
I'm concerned about this this time of year.
I'd be concerned about nighttime temperatures.
Yeah, I'm concerned about, yeah.
Yeah, I, he just said forty-five degrees, and he said, he said that he could start in two weeks if the weather would cooperate, and I said, okay. Of course, I know next Friday it's supposed to be zero or something like that, so. Supposed to be real cold next week.
Yeah, next Friday is supposed to be in forty-five fifty.
Is that what it is? Okay, so it could be. Maybe he was right.
The ground can't through and your surface is another tennis court, it's going to reach that temp where it's going to drop, it's going to weather, that's the problem.
Well, I know we didn't lay asphalt to get it go up below fifty-five, because asphalt gets so hard so fast when it's cold. You can't work it by hand, and I know that's hard, but, but he seemed to think they could, but, but again, you know, I did talk to him, I did talk to Larry Friday, we did discuss it. It's, it's an expense right now. I don't know if we can do or not. We'll just have to wait and see. But we are going to do something to, at least do the. Court where you can at least get on there and have the court to practice on, if nothing else. So we're going to do something to it, yeah.
I'm trying.
I would appreciate anything you decide to do. What I've seen from pickleball, I started a year ago. Took a year for me to play it. I thought it was deep, I was supposed to play something called pickleball. Well, I learned from it, it's, it's a game that everybody after this tried to really enjoy. Your age group is the one that's most likely to do, do time at it, it makes you. Physically, mentally, culturally, it's just a good game for people to participate in.
You say mentally? So mentally, I was.
No. No, you're not, Mike.
But uh, I think people don't have a value in gaming. Honestly, everybody tries so hard and likes it, but nobody's there, no one understands.
Let me ask you this, like I said, I can't, take a tennis court, the net's split in half, so one half, you can make two courts out of that one side?
Yeah.
Am I understanding correctly?
All right, you know, I wonder what it would, what it would.
Four courts, actually.
Yeah, actually.
Out of a whole size, four courts.
Yeah, each side, each, okay, like, here's the tennis court. Let's just, I'll show you how to do it. This is the tennis court. This is the net in between the tennis court. You would have.
One ten, one tennis court. We have two.
One tennis court, we have two full-size.
Right.
You can put two pickleball courts here and two pickleball courts there.
Okay, that's what, I was just asking, you can do two on each half of a tennis.
I thought it was one and one, but it's two and two. That's where I got confused at, and I, I, I shouldn't have done that. I should have took better pictures and.
Wonder what it would cost. I know this is not the best way to do it, but sometimes we can't do things the best way, just to get things done. What would it cost to do half of it and have two courts set up?
We could.
Would he come do that for a sma, I know it'd cost more per court, but.
Well, to do this area here, which is one tennis court, was twenty-four something, to do this side and this side. Now, you could just do this side, but it'd probably be more expensive just to do this side. Like, to do two of these, it was going to be, like I said, a thirty-eight, nine, or thirty-nine, eight, whatever it was. Was to do two full-size, so it would probably be like, this one's twenty-four, it'd probably be fifteen, sixteen thousand to do this one.
But that's something that's a little more doable.
It is feasible, and I'm not saying it's not.
That's something we can do a little quicker, but at the same time, it'd be, just like, made the same one a while ago, it's kind of a place to start to see if it grows and then.
That's true.
If you get several more people playing and y'all come to us here, here by the end of the summer, it's like, okay, we're full, can we have another? That gives you a little more.
Now, I will say.
It costs more overall, but in the long run, sometimes you can do that.
I will say, when we were looking at it down there, when he was down here. We set it up, like they play tennis, it's this one, you know, this one serves to that. They had it this way. And because, like you say, he was going to put two courts here, two courts here. Now, is that going to be, would that be. Sun, would that be a problem? Would that be?
If you remember, I asked you, me and Denny were here from Florida, Denny plays, we went up there and looked at it, the sun would be an issue, we thought. That's where we set them up this way.
Okay.
Because you're looking at, that way your sun's at your side about all the time.
Yeah.
The other way, you're looking.
Look, one, one.
You wouldn't set up just like a tennis court north-south, don't you?
Yeah, I think it's the same reading there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, in the summertime, we go, we're, we're there at seven-thirty in the morning.
Yeah.
And in the wintertime, we wake eleven-thirty, twelve, we're so done with that. So it's, once you start playing, we really thinking to go, go here. But I understand, I wouldn't want to put up four courts for twenty-six thousand dollars, and they look good.
Nobody's, well, there's two tennis courts up there not being used now.
Yeah, well, tennis, in Owensboro, no tennis courts are, they're just about out.
Yeah.
Well, like this too, is we're there playing outdoor, but there's also about four indoor that's been, that's been full at the same time in our apple. So this is, this is a big sport in areas, all areas I've been in, Owensboro, that's far the last two hundred years out of it. Uh, no doubt, I believe that they'll here in the county, be sent for picking the new, there's not a lot for us to do right now, honestly.
Well, and like I said.
Too responsible with the city to prefer some high county recreational, but the same thing.
Well.
That comes to be down.
Sure.
In money. And I would feel like, and Mike and I talked about this, you've got lights somewhere up your court, of course, but if I have a light, it's all. And we know people drive here to play evenings to get a gig, but, well, thank you, Mike, also, want to just love those people down there for that.
Sure.
To me, with that, this, this is.
That's, well, see, that's one of the things, when I talked to Jimmy, Mike's the one that sent me to Jimmy the first place, and when I talked to Jimmy the first time, that was one of the big drawing points for us was we had lights.
Yeah.
Because then people could play, and he said, he said, there will be people drive over here, like, we drive to Owensboro plays, there're going to be people driving to Owensboro. Well, I can't play because they can play or not. You, we talked about that.
Yeah, exactly.
And I said, I said, well, that even makes it better, because that means we're getting people into our county. Do what?
They need to find some money. Well, that's what, I like.
I mean, I'd call him back and see if he can just do one. I don't.
Just to see, I mean, it can't hurt to find out what it would cost. That might be something we could do.
That would be two courts.
It'd be two courts, yeah.
This is just example, this is in South Carolina, they had twenty-two courts.
Yeah, yeah, they showed.
I mean, I didn't know what's, if you look online, it's on, it's online everywhere now.
Yeah, they, they, they have, uh, they have leagues and everything in those places, and I mean, it's crazy.
It's a. And I went there, I had a buddy, I went to Texas two weeks ago, couldn't even play, everything was booked up for a week.
Yeah.
They, they started a franchise called Chicken Pickle. Crazy, but if you want to Google that, there's on the restaurant with pickleball courts. Pickleball courts. And it's like, it's just a really, it's a fastest growing sport in the U.S. right now. It may be caused us old people can't play tennis and can't play basketball, and we want something to do to stay in shape, so.
There's a lot of qualifications in here.
Well, he's got, he's got. But anyway, I was.
I will get back with him and see what he comes up with, and maybe we can even, if I tell him, you know, that what we're doing, he might, who knows? I told him we were trying to start a league or trying to start the county, because we don't have any in the county. He was, I think that's the reason he gave me the better price on the first one. But I'll see what he can do if he just does one, and we'll see what he comes up with.
They'd get him in line to do three more if it goes over.
Well, see, that's what I was thinking. If we said, we're going to try one.
What, Kevin?
Two courts.
Two courts.
One side of the tennis.
Yeah, I'm going to try and get him to where we do, I hate talking with these things on there hard here. I'm going to try and do, do the one that has the two courts first. We were going to do the four courts, that's the one with the twenty, twenty-four thousand, and when I say twenty-fourty, maybe twenty-four, eight, or twenty-four, nine. But it was twenty-four thousand something. If, if, if he can do the two, and maybe he'll do it for fifteen, sixteen, I don't know what he's going to end up charging us. But, but I'll see what he can do on that, and then, like he said, we'll say, look, we're experimenting, but we, we're going to show you, and he knows, he's seen the place where we're having it. And that's why he said we could put, which I guess would be eight courts in that, no, yeah, eight courts up there easily. He said easily you could put eight courts up there.
Even on the way, we've got to run, you run eight courts each.
Yeah, that's what he said.
And actually, there would be more room than Owensboro's got, because they're limited. Like I said, they had one tennis court in York Park, and they made four tennis pickleball courts out of that one. So the fences are only six foot from the playing surface, which is kind of tight, but we're doing it. A little more room would be better, which we do have.
And he said he could do that with eight courts, but I mean, like you said, we could sell it as, okay, look, we're going to put this down to experiment, but if this works, we're going to do the other eight courts or, or.
Six.
Six courts, and we may be, he, maybe he will give us a discount. I mean, I'll, I'll talk to him. It doesn't, any dude pick up the phone or go, have him meet us down here and go over and look at it again.
I'm already impressed. You got to have two thousand dollars from what Owensboro paid.
Well, I said twenty-four, it could be twenty, it was twenty-four something.
There's a twenty-six, maybe can change as well, but you've already got a better price than they did, so, yeah, I think you'll ride track.
Yeah, well, I mean, I told him, we were starting it up down here, maybe he was giving us a discount or something. I don't know, but twenty-four something, I'm sure it was twenty-four something, I say twenty-four. It's, I think he'll come down and look at it again, and if we sit down and explain it to him, and when he comes down, I'll have y'all come out there. That may be the best thing, if we all sit down just talking. And you tell him, y'all be able to tell him where you even want it. You may decide, I want down this area or this corner, or, you know, there might be a better location for it. Y'all can. Y'all know where the sun comes from here. He doesn't. I mean, I do.
We would stay away from the back end, cause of the trees and leaves.
Right, but they're cleaning that up.
Yeah.
See, they want to clean.
We've got a tree, this will be a problem, but the tree's pretty handy in the summertime.
Exactly. And also, you know, there's a, the main street trees will give you shade in the early afternoon or late afternoon for a little while, which will help. On the main streets where the, the, you know, people like the bed and breakfast up there and all that, barbs.
Who's behind that? Is Mary Ruth behind that?
Yeah, Mary Ruth and the barbs ca, catering is there.
I know Barb's on one side, or.
And then the other side's Mary Ruth.
Mary Ruth's behind them.
Yeah, she's got some trees that can give some shade, but again, you don't want them too close, because then you get leaves and everything else on there. But I'll, I'll get back in touch with him and see what he can do.
No, I mean, you've got a great place to have the nice pickleball.
Well, that was, again, we all started talking about this back in the fall. That's one thing that we talked about was, we're not getting any use for it, and the first thing I did was ask if we could use it, because, you know, you used to when you had a grant, you could only use it for that. And I, they call it, we call it KLC, or you did, somebody did call it KLC.
We have, I was afraid, because I was told previously that it had to remain a tennis court.
Yeah, but that apparently KLC.
It has to remain recreational.
Yes, so we got by with that, which was a big plus for us, because now we can use it for, as long as it's something like pickleball or something like that, we can change it anything we want to. We can change it into basketball courts. In fact, I think we talked about switching, moving the pickleball down closer to the thing and moving the basketball up there, but. Nobody, nobody that plays basketball down there wants to move. They want to stay where they're at. I mean, it's kind of, that's the way it's always been, that's where they want to keep it, so. It's good enough for me. But I'll get back with them, and then we'll try and get everybody hearing in it, but like I said, we are trying. It is, it is, we are trying a little bit at a time, so. See if he can give us a better price.
I think if we can get it down with something like that, I'd like the idea of getting two of them, at least to get a start. Get you all started, get, to try to build it up, and that gives a little more incentive and.
Doesn't make sense to need all of them.
To get the next one and move right on down the line, go do another one or two more or.
We've got two nets we have carry around that, we could actually have, even if we don't have two excellent courts, we can still use two more nets and make it two more courts just for. If we get too many people there.
Yeah, we could just paint the lines for those courts. We could just paint the lines for those courts.
You know, two of these excellent, and then something happens, everybody starts coming, we can throw up two more nets and just get by.
Get, to get by, that we can get that other one done.
For all, if you got not ready to spend the money, we can, we can provide temporary nets and help.
Okay.
Roll things out.
Okay.
All right, I'll get all that.
I just appreciate your considerate, yeah. Honestly, I'm just here to, if I can facilitate help any way. It, it's all, if you guys, if you're doing it, I'll just invite you while we play in Owensboro, we enjoy it. I think the people I came to love playing here, I think they love the sport. If some of you guys sitting there don't think you'd ever play it, I'd be surprised if you don't try, if you like it. Either way, thank you very much.
Well, thank you all for coming.
Also, Sandy.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Wheat, the corporate with Walmart, Nancy was asking if you wanted to try to, or you had told me that you were going to try to maybe go to Walmart again and see if we could get that started again.
Have you talked to any of those folks from Walmart? I know.
I have not, but the reason we couldn't, uh, the reason they couldn't, Amy was the one trying to do the grant. Is because of the stipulation that Walmart had, and I don't remember exactly what the stipulation was per, perfectly, but they were requiring us to be. Have all these different things that we had never had to do before when we did a grant. And it's, it was, you know, Amy said, she said, she said, we've never had to even come close to these kind of stipulations on a grant before.
Do you have an example of?
I don't, and I wish, I wish, I, I didn't even, I should have remembered, but I, Amy was dealing with it, and she called and said, Kevin, they want us to do this, we've never done this before. I mean, it was going to. It, it was just jumping through hoop after hoop after hoop to get a grant that. It was going to, I think it was going to end up costing us money to get the grant, because you had to be certified in this and all this.
It was the timing too, because.
And it was the timing.
She was middle of a bunch of stuff, and then we hit a short window to get it.
Yeah, and it was before we hired our lovely new clerk over there, and she, she was doing double duty, and I'm sure.
Don't be blaming me on any of this.
I wasn't blaming you, no, I'm not blaming you, but uh, and I don't, I don't have an example of it. I'm sorry I don't, but, you know, that's, has been a little while ago when we did that. That was back in the fall.
Because it was even tied up something because of that foundation too.
Yeah, yeah, there was a foundation thing we had to do and just several different, there was about seven or eight steps that we had never had to do before. And she was trying, but I know she, I knew she couldn't, and then Jason sent me the thing, said, we try back in the spring. And that was the last comm, communication I've had from him, was we try it again in the spring, so.
Do you know what their grant cycle is? Is it quarterly or do they have a?
Well, when we met with Jason, Cindy and I met with Jason, and, and honestly, I don't think it's got anything to do with cycle. I think if we can get every, get our ducks in a row and get on their side, I think we can get it pretty much. At any time.
Even Eric Taylor was saying.
Yeah.
That he's pretty sure he may have figured it out, and then with the Beaver Young Foundation, and then just with five oh one C three, is what Jason from corporate Walmart's saying.
You know, one of the things, and I don't, I don't remember exactly what it was called, but there was one thing that we don't even have in our city, that they wanted us to, to verify that we had, and we don't even have it in our city. It was like a, like she said, it was some kind of foundation thing that we don't even have in our city. It's a.
And we've got the foundation.
Yeah, but it's something else that we don't have.
Sam's.
I don't know what it was, but Amy.
Sam's number.
Amy said, Amy said it was, that we don't have anything like it. I, I'm sorry, I don't have the information, but I know it was, it was something that we, as a city, do not have. Is it a tax? It's not a tax number. I know it's not.
Is it Dunn's?
No, it's not fun.
I bet it's that Sam's number. They just started requiring that about two years ago, three, all the time, it's about, maybe third quarter.
Is that what it is?
No, no, it's, it has nothing to do with Sam's Club. It's, that's just the initials, whatever it stands for, comes up to S, I think it's S A M M, S A M S S, maybe.
I don't know, but there was something, we don't, we don't.
But we renewed the Sam's number.
You have done?
If that's what it was.
I don't, there was something we didn't have, and she was, she was trying, but we, there was no way she could have got it on time, because it took like a month and a half to get it, and we had like three weeks to get it in, so.
If it's the Sam's number, you may check with Amy. She was working on that today. Something we had to have through FEMA, what the Sam's is, is that's an organization that. If FEMA, for instance, awards you any grants or any money, they're more or less a middleman.
They're clearing house.
It's a clearinghouse type.
They can contact you.
Yeah.
Um, and we had to have, last year was through, going through AFG grant process, and she was working on today renewing it, because she actually called me, but I didn't. So if it's, if it's the Sam's number, uh, you may check with her. She may, she's been in the process of working on it, so.
Yeah, because we were renewing it, because something's coming up about a CDVG, yeah.
That might have been it then, but I don't.
If I could, how can you, Kevin, if you did, that's the text that he actually sent me.
Jason?
Yeah.
Uh, see. The five oh one C three is what we're needing, and I don't know what that means.
It's, that's a IRS designation.
Yeah.
The five oh one under the code, and then they've got a C three, because the city is a five oh one, we're a C, I think C nine.
Maybe that was it, we weren't the right category or something.
The city, and see, I don't understand that, because anything, any kind of contribution to a municipality, like, it's tax deductible anyway. I don't know why.
Yeah.
And I mean, I hate it, we couldn't get it, because they were very on board.
Any kind of government agency is tax deductible on a donation, but.
C three, I think, is a nonprofit organization.
C three is a nonprofit.
Yeah, it's like your churches and your things of that nature.
What, is your church a C three or? What, is your church a C three, or?
It's a C three, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, a lot of churches, there's another, there's another designation for religious. That's why I asked.
Yeah.
So is ours a C, would ours be considered a C three?
The foundation is. Beaver Down Foundation is a five oh one C three. I know that, because we said it, uh-
So you think it wasn't a five oh one C three?
Uh, there was something that she couldn't get. I mean, she was trying, but she couldn't get it, and she, she, she said we had to apply.
Amy on that?
I'm sorry?
Do you care to check with Amy on that?
Oh, I'll, I'll do that tomorrow, and, also, I mean, I'll take care of it, but I mean, I, I know, I just asked her, I said, what else was we needed to get the grant? Because there was, there was a list, and we weren't close on getting it all done. So there were a couple of things that she just was having a hard time getting. And I mean, she was doing something she wasn't prepared to do either, so.
Yeah, we had to talk about it too, and it's fine, because it's just patience.
Yeah.
It's all going to happen, but it's just going to take your time, and I just wanted us to be able to just communicate about it, just bring a few things up, and I do have to leave. I apologize. We're in the middle of it.